And you'll notice that he came in for appraisal for $10,000. And for an area directly behind there, it's 1.3 acres. And I said, as we were talking, I asked him how to access that property since there is no city access, you can't access it from the highway. And he said, well, there's a description there. And I said, yeah, but I think that description's for that 40 feet. So he went over to the engineer's office and confirmed, yeah, that there is no access to the property.
Except through his property.
Except to existing property. So he said, I better look at it again. He came back with a second appraisal and said, based on the fact that it's not accessible except to the property owner up front, he said, my appraisal was $7,000. So I said, well, based on that, that's what I will present to the city council.
One of my thing about get back on the taxes.
Yeah, we'll go back on the tax road eventually.
At that value?
Yeah.
So that's good. Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion to accept the bid of $7,000. And he's agreed to this, right?
Yes.
Johnson, Thompson.
Thompson.
Yeah. Tony?
I don't care either way here, but are we just accepting to all agree that it's worth $7,000 tonight, or are we selling it, or what are we doing here tonight?
I was understanding that we're selling it to Mr. Thompson for $7,000. Has he expressed interest?
That's a recommendation.
Now he said, we're doing it.
You're getting rid of it. So that's what we're doing. We're making an offer to him, $7,000 for that property.
Yes. For the appraisal.
For the appraisal price.
He had wanted to bring up also the fact, as Jay and I met with him yesterday, that he wanted us to make sure that we realized that he had been taking care of that property for all this number of years that he's been out there. But he also said that he has also been utilizing that facility rent free to park his trucks on there, so.
I would move, I would set the valuation to sell it to. Okay, have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman. Okay. Okay. The motion to accept the $7,000 offer for the plan to TNR trucking by councilman Gray Vaughn, it was second by councilman Gayler. Any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda was the part of the revised agenda and the intake pump. And, can't talk about paperwork here. How much was that for? $12,507. Okay, here it is. Plus break. Any questions for Jim?
I've got a question, Jim. What does, what does a brass screener have to do with discouraging zebra muscles?
Zebra muscles do not like to attach themselves to it. And where most of the Kansas lakes and ponds are, again, inundated with them, including Wakanda, you know, it's just a fail safe, help keep our problems. Kind of like I don't like Brussels sprouts.
This is our only pump to supply water to the city of Lloyd to bring it into the treatment plant?
No, we actually have three pumps down there, but the one is the new pump that's on the water rights that we're trying to get figured out because it's not pumping enough of what it's supposed to. So it's still down. This is our main pump and that's, you know, going down on us. It started making noise. And so we have just the one pump now that brings water from the river up to the plant. If something would, and it's about 10 years old. So if something would have to get, unless we get a horse from irrigate, farmers with irrigation pumps, you know, to pump it up the river, which is in part of our emergency plan, you know, we have no other way of getting water up to the plant to treat it.
There's a question here from.
Yeah.
Have you, have you found any signs of zebra muscles in our piping yet?
Not to any big degree, but they have been making themselves known up at the lake.
Well, right, I mean, there's, there's nothing in our pumps. Have you gone into our pumps and found any evidence of zebra muscles in our machinery?
No, not yet. You know, I haven't actually taken the pumps apart, but from reports we get back from the rebuilders, they haven't mentioned any, anything of any significance. Even if there is, it's not a real concern yet. This is just kind of a precautionary measure because the new pump, we did specify with brass screen, and since we're going to have to pull this one out prepared, we just will put the precautionary on it.
How, how tight is that for a screen? Because I know zebra muscles start off, I've got a pontoon up in the lake and it's called zebra.
Yeah.
I know they, they start off really small, is, I mean, this is a flying screen.
They can actually get in through the screen because they are so small, but this keeps them from attaching onto screen and blocking the screen. Once they get through it, they'll go through the pump and on up and, you know, we'll get the little boogers out of the plant.
How long do we take with this? Any idea?
Uh, they, I think I've put it on revised area. I talked to Douglas and they said they could probably have a crew out here this week yet because, and then it'll probably take approximately, they'll, they'll fast track it, but I'm still guessing on the safe side of two, two weeks or so.
Okay.
Because, you know, we've done a lot of business with them and, you know, they're good, they've been good to us and vice versa and, you know.
We need to get it fixed. Or you're telling me we're kind of about down to one pump now? Is he gonna?
Yeah.
He won't have the pump enough to keep us in water until we get two pumps running up to staff, or?
Hey, I've got three or four guys there that are bigger than I am that give them five gallon bucket in each hand.
Okay.
We'll keep you in water, but I did hear back from Douglas Pump about six o'clock tonight, and he didn't get, hear back from the manufacturer of the screen yet, but for that size of one, it's 14 inch, it would approximate about $800 for that screen. So that'd be on top of the 12, 12.5. Yeah.
Since we got you up here, I, I want you to know that I've been getting some complaints about discoloration, and I know you're flushing a lot of sewer rays. Are you expecting that discoloration to clear up anytime soon, or?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't heard any complaints since the flush. And yeah, I heard some, too, about yellowish water. And I haven't heard any, anything about odor or anything, but I trust them and we're thinking, you know, some, some, from flushing, that something's been working back and forth a little bit, and we're hoping that we got it flushed out now because I haven't heard anything for probably a week.
Like, just today, I had one person complaining who lives up by a credit edition.
Oh, okay, well, it, yeah, I mean, there still might be a little bit floating around, but there's no color going out of plant. And so if it persists, I would recommend maybe have him give me a call and we'll have that area reblushed again.
Jim, didn't we just put in on that third pump this year, or earlier this year down there? Is that, we're talking about the same one on the river?
Yeah. Okay, that was at the end of last year, and that was that pump with the new water right. Come to find out after they got it all in, what it was expected to put out coming up to the plant, it won't do. And so they're trying to figure out, you know, what we can do to either, we'll either have to live with it, or we can upgrade it to do what it has to do. Because apparently there's more friction head in the line than what we've been used to, and the pumps that we've had down there have been oversized, so they, they didn't have any trouble, you know, pushing past it. But this one was oversized just enough to put it on the edge to where it's not strong enough to push it past it. We're, that pump, uh, would only pump about 1.4 million at max, and our plant is rated at 1.5.
So.
But we're working with them to see if we can, the cheapest way to upgrade it, or, you know, since that was a 57,000 dollar project, you know, we're looking at the best way to upgrade it and, you know, without spending huge bunch more money.
So the pump isn't doing what they said it would do?
It's doing what, it's doing what the manufacturer and everything says it will do, but apparently we have more head loss in our lines coming up to the plant than just an open pipe would.
And the other two pumps are bigger than that?
Yes, yes. The one, well, the one that we're discussing now that needs rebuilt is 1,600 gallons per minute. The one that we're using right now is 1,400 gallon per minute. And this one was backed in at 1,275 gallons per minute. That new one was backed in, which in, you know, if everything had been correct, would have been plenty big enough, but we found out that we, we have some issues with, you know, more head than we anticipated. We knew that we had.
Lee?
Yeah?
So are we just asking for the $12,507?
Well, plus the cost of the screener.
Plus the screener.
Yeah, that's under, that would come under your signature, you could sign for that, we don't have to have that, it's a part of this. It will have to, for whenever you get the information on it, you can just work that out.
Yeah, yeah.
But it also says in the notes that the price is being provided prior to inspection, they're making more or less repair needed. Is that not going to change the price?
Yes, it could possibly. We're hoping that we caught it soon enough. We had Mike Douglas come up here and actually look at it, and we're hoping we caught it soon enough that there shouldn't be any hidden surprise. He anticipates that both spider bearings, that main supports that keep it centered, and since those are worn, he anticipates wear on the impeller and bolt, that he'll have to replace the impeller and bolt spiders and the shaft in there. And then he'll box a coat and everything to, so we're hoping we caught it soon enough. I can't say positively. After they get it done, infected, then we'll have a sure answer.
Okay. Paul, you have a question?
So, that being said, what are we actually approving?
We're approving the expense to repair the one that's needs repair.
Not, not an amount.
I thought it was approved in $12,507. And that what we're asked to approve?
That's more or less, though. That's what I'm asking. And then screen.
So what do you want, Jim, Jay?
That's a key to approve for the amount stated. We'll deal with it.
Okay. I made that motion. The move by councilman, that we approve the expenditure from Douglas Pump, the amount of $12,507 to have a second. Second by councilman McMillan. Any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is adjournment. Entertain a motion for adjournment. So, being moved by councilman Ponto, that would be adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman McMillan. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We're adjourned. We'll now go into the work session. Katie's not here at this time. I wanted to point out, the treasurer's report goes in here this evening. You have a chance to pick it up. Next is Jay.
Yeah, I have a couple of things I want to mention. First, well, we've been talking about water and we will have a water report we would like to present to you on May 17th and review that with, with the council. This is a report I know you've been waiting on for a while, and so we're going to be scheduling that for next meeting. I received a call from, that's done with that item, but I received a call from a gentleman saying that in the past administrator has made an appointment to Dennis Su- Suneet, how do you say his name?
Schumet.
Schumet? I'm still learning my name, so the people here in town, it's going to take a while for them to know all of them. But he was saying in the past, the administrator has made an appointment to the 12th Judicial District Advisory Board for Community Corrections. And I'd ask Andrew if he would be willing to do that, and he acknowledged, yes, that he would. So I think it's a board that is perfectly all suited for and will do the job of, so. The, also, I want to mention that everybody's lined up for a meeting with Marla Flinsey on the 11th, and that's to meet with her, to talk about their expectations for the appointment of a new administrator here. So I, I'll just take one of these and just pass it on down. And Lee, I don't have your name on there, but you are scheduled for 4:30 after I talk to you on the phone. I think this will give each of you an opportunity to meet with her and say what you're looking for, what you hope for, and what you don't want. One other thing. This is something the mayor mentioned the other day that kind of stuck with me, and that was the fact that in the past, I don't know if it was the last year or the last two years, you've had a retreat that involved council and involved staff here. And that usually has happened in June. And you've worked with a man named John Devine. I think that's his name. I guess my question is, do you want to do it again?
My feeling, I guess my feeling, he doesn't, I would just assume, wait until we get a new superintendent.
I had that thought, too. That makes some sense. Is there a consensus on that?
I'm agreeing. Yeah. It's like it's kind of unanimous. I see a lot of heads, like. Okay. It makes sense just to have the long term in.
Yeah.
All right. Part of our planning and the direction that we try to take, and you ought to part of it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Next item on the, on the work session is the contract with NexTech for hardware and software support. Well, I think we're using, I know we're using NexTech for the police department, and I think that's going pretty well. Cheryl, I'd like you to want to come up and address the council with your proposal, and what you have going, and I think Mandy had you come in.
Yes. Have you, you've all got a copy of it, correct?
Yes.
What we did is kind of did a walkthrough, and we looked at each of the computers, the server, everything that holds your network together and makes it work like it should. At this point in time, you have four computers that really need to be replaced. Once they get to be three years old, you need a pre-year rotation plan on all of your equipment. Your server needs to be replaced, it's several years old as well. Your backup, if, you know, we can provide the backup service like we do with the police department, where it backs up to a device locally, it's a managed storage device on the network, and it backs up to two of our facilities. So if there was fire, storm, lightning, whatever, and your facility here was damaged, we can get you a copy very quickly from our facility to back down, get you back up and running. The hardware that I'm proposing to replace are four computers, a server, and your firewall. Which your firewall is your sonic wall appliance that blocks the bad things from coming into your network. The one you have now is older, it's discontinued. As of, I think, November, you will be able to buy support for it anymore. And the new sonic walls have gigabit network ports, they have faster internet throughput, so you may see some better performance as well on the network for that. The virus protection on all workstations and on the server will be part of this. We have right now two wireless access points, one up here, one downstairs. They are linkses, they're not that secure. If we put up the arubas that we usually put in, they're secure, we can set up a guest network. We could also set it up so that if you needed to access the network, you could, and it'd be secure, it'd be encrypted so that, you know, that you don't want to get out and get The, the whole system, and then there's two computers, Jay's and Mandy's, that are fairly new, that we just put them under managed, kind of like we did at the police department, we had a couple out there that we knew, we just manage those and whenever they're replaced, and then we'll roll them into the agreement. Then battery backups, Microsoft Office, antivirus for every computer. That way, everybody's got the newest version of Office, they've got battery backups to protect them, and the antivirus for more protection as well. To install this, all the labor's covered. Any problems with the equipment that technically NexTech owns, that is a full-blown task on the two managed ones, hard drive goes out, or, you know, it needs to be replaced for whatever reason, that's on us. Breaks down, it's on us. We do monitor these, we make sure that all the Windows updates, security patches are current, and we check that usually every morning to make sure all those little bells and whistles are marked and green. Your old equipment, we will dispose of for you if you so desire, and then we will provide you documentation. Typically, if you have hard drives that have confidential or sensitive information, there's a facility in Hayes, NexTech is back there, and those hard drives are shredded, literally to pieces. And, you know, we just put a switch in here, not six months ago. So that's not really included in this, but it's a brand-new switch, it should last for three or four years, no problems. Basically, what this does is provides the computer equipment here in the city office with a steady and reliable resource to make sure they're all working at full capacity. If something's needed, we're right here in town, we can be right on it. If it's an emergency, call me home in the middle of the night, I'll get up and see what I can do, so. We've been doing it now for not quite a year at the police department, and Dave seems to be very happy with it, has added a couple of things to it, so it's been working very well.
And you're going to do all of this for $1,287?
Per month.
It didn't say that on here.
I was going to say hi, but it doesn't say.
I'm going to buy your computer from you.
It's $1,287 per month for a 36-month term. At the end of that 36-month term, we come in and we say, okay, it's time to renew this, we're going to refresh all this equipment. So you get new computers, you get a new, a new server, you get a new firewall, new switch, so you don't have that possibility that you've got a computer sitting over, you kind of forgot about it, now it's six years old and it's really, you need it, but all of a sudden it dies. And I think we've got one right now that we're having an issue with, with Chris, I believe, so.
Well, this really upgrades our, our firewalls and the security.
Yes.
And, and all the information with all the hacking and everything going on within the country and the computer world, like, I think it's as important that we really improve that as much as any.
We also provide a monthly report, and, you know, we can do it weekly if we need to, of what's been going on, what we're seeing on that sonic wall. Somebody tried to hack it, has it had any issues, things like that. Which is beneficial because a lot of people, they can figure it out, but they don't know what they're looking at. But this report is broken down, so it's, you know, fairly simple and easy to understand and read.
So what happens if at some point either you guys or us don't want to do business anymore, or can't do business anymore? Does everything just disappear?
We would work with you. I mean, if you decide you want to terminate the contract, then we'll come in and sit down and say, okay, do you want, you know, buy out the contract, what do you want to do?
Well, that's going to work on both sides, though.
Yeah.
Because your company could just fold up tomorrow. I'm not saying that it ever would, but, and you have all of our information stored.
Actually, even if we got your information, we can't read it.
Well, it doesn't make it useful, you read it or not.
No, we would not, that would be.
Retrieving it, though.
That would be a part of our shutdown process, if the company were to shut down, but we'd get that data back.
And then all the equipment is, belongs to you.
Technically, yes.
So we would have to go immediately looking for new equipment?
Not necessarily. I mean, like I said, we'd sit down with you, work out a solution where maybe for, you want to buy out some hardware. It, it just depends where you're at in that realm of that three-year, if it's the end of the three-year, you want to just not renew it, just move forward and keep what you got.
Okay, thank you. How many total workstations will this cover?
Um, there'll be four new, and then two, at this point, Jay and Mandy's that are newer, that will just be managed, we'll just do, you know, make sure they have Office and antivirus, and if there, and if there's any problems with them, the labor's covered. Parts probably wouldn't be, because they're not going to do the full-blown task, but all labor would be.
Updates and everything will be pushed?
Yes.
Offsite, point in point with. And the virus protection would be on each individual station, plus it would be on the server?
Yes.
Because I noticed that there were seven total on that line, I just.
Yeah, that antivirus is a must. So especially nowadays, that crypto lockers going around, and it's getting, kind of hot people getting here.
Cost of it in the technology world, what goes on anyway?
And we offer this service as a way of making sure that networks don't get outdated, and that they're protected as much as possible. Because it's hard if you don't have an IT background to know, hey, do I need to replace this? How old is this? And what do I need? And do I need more RAM? Do I, you know, we know that. If something comes up and you need more RAM in the PCs, it's covered.
Andrew?
Along with the antivirus and the firewall, are you also monitoring the emails themselves?
No.
So spam filtering, anything of that nature, but also viruses contained in attachments to email would not be part of that deal, or?
It scans the emails when you, for the viruses. We don't monitor the email. Now, we do have another service that we can do spam filters right now. So, you know, it's, I think it's like $2.50 a month per email address.
But, you know, you mentioned crypto lockers, stuff like that, these things are initiated by somebody opening up an email that's received on their computer that, oh, you have an Amazon package waiting for you, well, I don't know about that. And once you get into it, that's when you initiate it into the system. It would scan for that, but it wouldn't prevent those emails from coming into the system?
Well, if it knows that it has a virus, it'll block it.
Okay.
And it'll quarantine it, okay? You have another layer of protection in the sonic wall, because we put the full mail deal on it as far as your comprehensive gateway security suite. And that includes gateway antivirus, gateway malware, intrusion prevention, content filtering, and, you know, several other features. So when you're, the internet's coming in, it goes through the sonic wall first, and that will catch quite a bit of it. If it makes it past that, then you have your antivirus on the PCs for dual-layer protection.
And if something does get through, then that's something going on your side?
Yeah.
Okay.
And where you're under the agreement, it'll be taken care of.
Okay.
I have seen PCs that needed to be rebuilt because of some of these viruses. Some of them have taken two hours to get rid of the virus, and I've seen some take two days trying to, you know, cover the data and everything else. That's, again, is where the good backup comes in, it's very critical.
So what do we need to do?
I think tonight, we just make the recommendation.
I think tonight, we just make the recommendation, I think Mandy was wanting to go this way because my understanding, I think our service level had dropped from our previous service company.
No, since the police department doesn't have, you know, it's plus anymore. They charge us additional that they want to come from Manhattan here now, just to do quarterly checks.
And we don't have a level of service with the protection with them that we have?
No, we've got a sonic wall and stuff like that. And there's really only two technicians that I like that really know their stuff. I mean, I mean, if they can't even picture out, you know, they're the only two that can really, it doesn't take six times to picture out like, you know.